We're going to get started. Welcome to all of you. It sounds like it's still noisy, I'm going to use my teacher voice pretty soon. Okay. My name is Joan Peterson. On behalf of the cosponsors of this evening's First District and At-Large City Council Candidate Forum, I'd like to welcome you all here this evening. The sponsors of this forum are the League of Women Voters, the Lakeside Leicester Park Community Club, and Northern Communities Land Trust. I am a member of the League of Women Voters, and I will be your moderator for this evening. Okay, I'm going to turn this up a little. That's... How's that? Is that better? Great. Okay. Okay, more seats in the front? Don't be shy, sit in the front. Okay, I have a little...I have some opening remarks here. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization, and while we as the League do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed by the candidates tonight are their own, and not those of the sponsoring organizations. We do encourage you, as we encourage our members as individuals, to become involved in your community and the political party of your choice. It is the purpose of the sponsoring organizations to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you, face to face. There will not be enough time to cover all of the issues in this limited time setting, so if your questions are not addressed, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. I'm sure they would all just love to hear from you. The format for the evening will include an opening statement...whoops! The format for the evening will include an opening statement from each of the candidates, questions solicited ahead of time, and a closing statement from each of the candidates. In order to be fair to all the candidates and make the best use of our time tonight, I ask that the audience remain silent and withhold their applause until the very end. At this time, I will introduce the First District City Council candidates, Todd Fedora, if you could just hold your hand, I guess you can see their name tags there, and Jennifer Julesroot, and the Duluth City Council At-Large candidates, Linda Krug, Emily Larson, Tim Riley, and Chad Smith. The order of speaking was determined in advance by drawing numbers. And so, we will begin the forum with a one-minute opening statement from each of our candidate...candidates. We do have a timekeeper in the front who's going to keep us all running just according to time here, so watch for her, I hope the candidates can all see her. Okay, so we will begin with Tim Riley, you will have one minute for an opening statement, followed by Chad Smith, followed by Todd Fedora, then Jennifer Julesroot, Linda Krug, and Emily Larson. Okay.
Thank you so much for making me feel welcome here today. I appreciate an opportunity to address the citizens of Duluth, and especially the League of Women Voters this night. One of the main objectives that I have in running for city council is to just make you all feel just as welcome at the city council meetings. And as a person that has attended city council meetings in the past, sometimes I think that they can improve upon that a little bit more, and I am surely going to address that issue and work so that each and every person that enters that city council chambers feels more than welcome to attend that day.
Okay, go ahead Chad.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Well, thank everyone for coming today, it's good to see you in full room for the city council election. The biggest reason I decided to run in this cycle is because I think it's important...I think it's important for city councilors to be as unbiased and objective as possible.
Whenever you want to make emphasis, let us know.
Sorry, we're readjusting. We knew there were...
Sure can. Again, my name is Chad Smith. Like I said very loudly, I decided to run because I think city councilors should be as objective and unbiased as possible in all their decisions. It helps to make thoughtful decisions. So for that reason, I decided to seek no endorsements of any kind in this election cycle, and I hope that'll allow me to fulfill my objectives of being a good steward of this city and make good decisions on the council.
Hi folks, it's glad to see you all here tonight. I was here eight years ago for a forum, and it was about 95 degrees in here. The winner of the debate was the last one to be still sitting in a seat. There was a lot of people that were laying on the ground, but thanks again for coming tonight. I'm running for reelection to be your representative in Lakeside Leicester Park and Woodland because I care, and we can get into that a lot more. I felt I made really solid decisions in representing you on the city council, have consistently voted to make sure that I represent you in terms of what's impacting you the most. Need new park equipment? I brought forth the ordinance to establish a park equipment replacement program. Have problems with party houses in your neighborhoods? I was one that brought the social host ordinance to Duluth. Concerned about how you're going to pay your bills from time to time? I have not voted for a utility rate increase, a property tax increase, and did not vote for the street lighting fee. I think there's a lot of room within that budget to find more efficiencies. Looking for that opportunity, a little bit more time to do a lot more work, and I guarantee you that's what you get from me.
Well hello, I'm Jennifer Julesroot, and I'm running for the First District City Council seat to represent those of you in Lakeside Leicester Park and Woodland. I...it's...thank you for coming, first of all. I was here a year ago, actually in the back collecting questions as one of the moderators or one of the volunteers, and so I've always been very passionate about public policy and about voter education, so I'm glad to see so many people here today. But I'm running for city council, what first interested me in...interested me in running was initially clean water. Clean water is important, we want to protect Lake Superior, and that passion and dedication onto that topic led me to becoming the president of the Public Utilities Commission, and I've been working hard to create the city's first comprehensive plan for our water system, and when I'm done with that, I'm going to move into our sewer and storm sewer comprehensive planning. And so I want to take that same passion and put it into all the other issues facing the city because...so thank you.
Just make sure we don't get that cord there, right? Got it.
Thank you, my name's Linda Krug, thank you for being here. I really appreciate the League of Women Voters putting on this forum. I'm standing so that you can see me and I can see you, and I'm hoping, I'd like to say, I'm running with a lot of tall people, that maybe by the time this is over, I'll be a little taller. A lot of people want to be on the city council because they're passionate about one particular issue, and I'm passionate about problem solving. My background as a mediator, as dean of the College of Liberal Arts, as president of our faculty union, makes me a person who's used to bringing people together to work out issues and move the city forward. Lots of other issues I want to work on, of course, like having a strong core infrastructure and leveraging some of the talent we have in our community with the talent we have in the university to create better jobs. We need to get our storefronts filled with jobs because when we have our storefronts filled, we...that means we can hire more police officers.
There's a lot going on up here. Thank you for being here. I'm Emily Larson, I'm running for city council at large, or as my kids like to call it, extra-large seat for Duluth City Council. I'm running to bring positive energetic leadership to the city council. I will do that by harnessing my experience as a parent, as a small business owner, as a consultant to nonprofits, where I work with a whole set of nonprofits, and I focus on economic and workforce development. It's very specifically the work that I do. I moved here 20 years ago to go to college. I stayed because I loved the city, so I'm excited to bring that perspective of choosing Duluth because I think so many of us have chosen this city as our home. I'm excited to help grow middle-income jobs by helping to develop our small businesses into becoming larger businesses and bigger employers, and I'm also really passionate about our water and sewer and infrastructure, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the last thing that I'm excited about is that Duluth is a small city or a mid-sized city, that's a regional hub, and I think we have some things we can do by working with our regional partners to kind of leverage new resources. So thank you.
That ends the opening statements. And because of the TV crew here, they have asked that you pass along the microphone and their microphone, so sorry if you've got two-handed microphones there. During the next portion of our forum, the candidates will respond to questions submitted by our cosponsors. The questions that will be asked this evening were not given to the candidates in advance. So the first, we will begin with Chad Smith on the first question, and just go down the line. And here's the question, you will have one and a half minutes to answer. What prior experience qualifies you to be a member of the Duluth City Council?
Well, truth be told, I probably do have the shortest resume of everybody sitting up here at the front table today, but you know, I think that's okay. I think I represent a large group of Duluthians who, they haven't really gotten involved in the city yet, and they want to find a way to become more involved in the city. I think I represent them very well, and that's...you know, I just want to be involved in the city somehow. I realize I have a tough hill to climb, you saw I probably only got about 5% in the primary, but...so if that doesn't work out, I'm still going to be here involved somehow. I know I don't have a lot of experience, but I hope in the few future years coming up that I will.
I'm not real ambidextrous here, but what's my prior experience? Well, obviously I've been on the city council for four years, have hit the ground running actually right away at the city council because of my, what's now 25 years of commercial banking experience, comprehensive financial analysis, I deal with large municipalities and large commercial concerns. Specialties include commercial real estate and contractors as well as retailers. My community experience was six years on the Duluth Airport Authority, in which we...I was on a search committee to hire Brian Ricks, who's a fantastic airport authority director. Also renegotiated a contract with Johnson Controls in terms of our HVAC service agreement that served the Duluth...or saved the Duluth Airport Authority thousands of dollars on an annual basis. Also was on the Animal Allies Humane Society Board of Directors for six years, helped fundraise, and actually I was one that found the land to put their beautiful new shelter, which is one of the best shelters in the state of Minnesota, up near the airport. Was also on the airport authority to help do that, and went through a couple of transitions on the board. When I was on the board at that point, there were only four or five people, was part of trying to rebuild the Animal Allies Society Board, and it's running very, very well right now. Also spent some time on the United Development Achievement Board, Junior Achievement Board, and there's several different organizations in there that I was involved with as well. So pretty well-rounded experience that's given me a pretty wide array of viewpoints in terms of making unbiased, objective decisions.
Well, as a citizen, I've become...I have way too much knowledge about the Public Utilities Budget, $92 million budget, actually cumulatively it's $97 million. So it's a huge part of what the city councilors deal with, and I've become very knowledgeable in that area, and I think infrastructure and laying a solid infrastructural foundation is important to Lakeside and Woodland residents. We care about our streets, our sidewalks, our water, and we want to see these things strengthened. And so, I've also been...I encourage you to look at my website, it's JenniferforDuluth.com. My resume is lengthy, I've been greatly passionately involved in the community for a number of years. Before leaving the workforce to stay home with my children, I was a district executive with the Boy Scouts of America. I was in charge of overseeing over 200 adult volunteers, doing a lot of fundraising. I've also just been deeply passionate about the community and deeply involved in the community, and I encourage you to look at my website, it will give more detail. I've also been a landlord for the last 10 years, I have three duplex properties that I own and manage, and I think the priorities that I've placed in my rental properties is the same kind of priorities that I'll place in the city government, which is reducing my debt and making sacrifices in order to do so. I've been...so I'm looking forward to serving you on the city council and digging into all the issues that are important to us.
Well, thank you again, and as I said earlier, I came to...well, actually I didn't say earlier, now I will say, I came to Duluth 25 years ago to take a job teaching at UMD, and I taught for 12 years, and then I became dean of the College of Liberal Arts for the next 11 years. While I was dean, I had an opportunity to hire over 100 people, 72 new faculty. I sat on the negotiating team on the management side, two contracts while I was a professor. The first 12 years, I sat on the union's contract negotiations for two or three cycles, and so I've done lots of things, I've managed a budget of $17 million. I understand the bureaucracy and how the bureaucracy works, and I know that city government is a bureaucracy, so I feel comfortable moving from the academic realm into the city realm. I've also have a small business, Linda Krug or Krug Mediation and Consulting and Mediation LLC, and I've...I'm trained as what's called a Rule 114 mediator, and so I'm used to working with people who are in disputes. I like to focus on people in employment situations, although I've consulted with people who are having some relationship difficulties, but working on...I'm a good listener, listening to what they have to say, and so I have...I bring a wealth of experience.
Thank you. Well, like I said, I moved here 20 years ago from St. Paul to go to college, and I simply couldn't leave once I graduated. I've been active in the community the entire 20 years that I've lived here, so I volunteered with a number of organizations, I've served on a handful of boards and committees. I understand budgets, as a business owner, I certainly understand the need to be very strategic and very cautious about some of the decisions that you make. I'm really excited to bring my current experience as a consultant and as a coordinator of a workforce development model into practice. So one of my main consultancies is coordinating Duluth at work. It's focused on increasing employment opportunities and growing small businesses over the course of three years. We've been doing this work, we're finding some wonderful results, we work with well over 300 folks here in town who are really committed to their success. So one of the things that I like to do is go point to point, to take a mission and a vision statement with a nonprofit organization and develop an implementation plan around that, to do fundraising, to find new resources, to look elsewhere around the country for new innovations, and so that's some of the experience that I'll be bringing. I think also the insight of having school-aged children who are enrolled in our public schools. I'm a coach in the community, I run our trails and I marathon as much as I can around the city, so there's certainly a lot of different perspectives I'll bring, and I'm really, really looking forward to it.
I requested to be transferred to Duluth about 25 years ago as a retail manager, and managed a retail jewelry store in Duluth for about 15 years, and working with the people in a regular retail setting. It's just wonderful to work with people, to hear their ideas and implement them. We were a successful jewelry store for the entire time that I worked with them, and then the company that I worked for laid us off because overall that company was not profitable, so I experienced a layoff, went back to college, and I was the secretary of the LSC Art Club, and at that time fundraiser called The Empty Bowl, which some of you are probably familiar with, we were producing bowls for that fundraiser at that time, and as you know, that's grown into just a huge event down at the depot. And I've been a database coordinator, I have an LLC, small business myself, and I'm an author of a book called Victims, and as well as I'm a citizens patrol person right in my neighborhood community, and we meet on a regular basis to make sure we have safe communities and just have a wonderful time watching out for the rest of the folks in the community.
Okay, question number two, and again you'll have one and a half minutes to respond, and we'll begin with Todd Fedora. What is the single most important issue facing Duluth, and what would you do to address it?
Well, first of all, we had...we heard mention of streets tonight, and when I ran four years ago, I made a commitment at that time that streets was on my top priority, and I lived up to that commitment. I attend the weekly meetings, the construction meetings to your neighborhood concerns, and I got a little sideways with realtors in downtown Duluth. We were using at one point in time municipal state aid monies for Skywalks, if you can believe that, and I said, "No, I'm not going to support that," so now all of the municipal state aid monies that travel through St. Paul are now being invested in our streets, which is exactly where they should be, and I'm proud, very proud to make sure that Glenwood got done this year. What's the number one priority in the city of Duluth? No different than what's happening at other cities, counties, states across this country. There's a mismatch between the expenses and the tax collections, and you're seeing, I mean, it doesn't take long to take a look on the internet to see what kinds of problems and issues that are out there. You've got communities that are filing bankruptcy out there because they cannot meet their obligations. So what's happening is we are having to make some very tough decisions in terms of allocating our resources. Now, the easy answer is, is we're just going to increase your taxes, or we're going to increase your fees. No, that's not a real easy answer because many of our older folks are on fixed incomes, and if their social security is going up, it's getting eaten up by Medicare premiums. I hear it all the time. We need to make the tough decisions ourselves when we're sitting behind the desk at the city council, that many of you in this room have made paycheck to paycheck, and I'm there to make sure that we're...we are being very wise and very prudent in how we're spending our money.
I would say the same thing, but I have a different take on it. When we bring in grant money for...to line sewers that would affect 1,200 homes in Lakeside and Leicester Park, we need to support that grant money that funds 80% of that expense with a 20% PFA loan. We need to say...we need a city counselor that understands that making that investment is important because our clean water is important. We need to invest in our streets, we need to ensure that Millen overlays on 45th Avenue East over here occurs, and so we need a counselor that understands that and makes it happen. We need someone that not only says they support public safety, but votes in support of public safety. When our police department says that they need adequate staffing levels in order to do their job and serve...deliver justice to our neighbors, we need to ensure that we have a counselor that not only understands that, but votes in favor of it. And so I'll be voting in favor of these necessary things. Clean water, public safety, streets and utilities are all important aspects of our community. Yeah, thank you.
In my view, the biggest issue facing us is actually the cutting of our core services, and core services that aren't strong, and of course I'm talking about public safety and utilities and our roads, public works, and our parks and recreation and libraries. And what happens is when you cut those things, it makes it harder to attract new people to our community and new jobs to our community, and we have to find a way to address that. And I'm not saying that we have to increase our taxes, we have to find a way to expand our tax base. I believe that we have cut enough in the city. There's always places where you will find efficiencies, but we have cut, talked with the mayor, we've cut $10 million over the last few years, and we are now looking at getting...having to cut Rig Number Three from the headquarters downtown fire station, and it's those sorts of things that reverberate through the community and to others who think about coming here, they say, "My gosh, this is happening," or "Your libraries aren't open, why do I want to come to a community like this?" So we have to find a way to keep our core infrastructure strong so that we will indeed attract new businesses and new people to our community, and I will work on that as a city counselor.
So the single most important issue I think facing the city is our budget. I think we've all addressed it in different ways, but for me, part of it is we're looking at, I agree with some of the other offerings, that we have some very, very tough decisions ahead of us, there's no doubt about it. However, I think we can be more aggressive and more assertive in the way that we're leveraging new resources. For instance, we have, as Linda alluded to, a cutting of services of our library system. 28% of our library users do not live in the city of Duluth. And while I think that's wonderful, I love that there are people coming into our city to use this resource, I also think we need to have a very honest conversation about how we pay for that resource collaboratively. So when we're having library resources cut, when we're having hours to our libraries cut, I think that there are creative solutions out there. So part of it is not just looking at how we make hard decisions now, it's how we position for new leveraging and new resources in the future. The other idea that I think we could pursue more of, St. Louis County and the city of Duluth share a series of overlapping services, and by overlapping, I don't think that there's a substantial amount of dual staffing, I think it's more about an efficiency of how we can talk about doing purchasing. That conversation is currently starting. How can the city and how can the county share some purchasing? In my mind, there are other efficiencies that we can find like that, that would position both the county and the city to be as strong as possible budget-wise, and I agree that by doing that, we send a very positive message about who we are as a city, that we address both the challenges and that we seek new opportunities.
The same sentiment that the rest of the folks have expressed up here about the budget is a large concern. As regular people out in the community working, we have to live within our means, and if it means tightening the belt, I think all of us as citizens understand what it means to tighten our belt. I have to say that I see a lot more homelessness in the city of Duluth, and it wasn't long ago I saw a young couple with their backpacks coming out of woods area, and they're just trying to make their way, two people in love, and I think that we're seeing more and more of this where they're taking grocery carts and they're pushing them through the streets, and some...one of the persons I talked to, and they say, they go out and they pick up garbage all over town, and they feel like that's what they're doing to help the community. And they may very well be in assistance, I didn't get into that part of the conversation, but we really need to be concerned about the increase in homelessness in Duluth, and it's really because we have to live within our means. We're just like anybody else, and a lot of times we'd like to look the other way, but in this instance, in this economic time, we can't look away anymore.
And of course, I'd have to agree with everyone else up here, the need to tighten the budget is definitely the most pressing issue facing the city right now. now. Now, when I hear about that, my reaction is to, I think to tighten the budget, we need to find more efficiencies. And I prefer to find more cuts rather than increase taxes. You know, when I hear about people mentioning tax increases, what I hear, what I see in my mind immediately is the person that's already working 40 hours a week and they can already barely make it as it is, and they genuinely can't afford more tax increases. You know, I think units of government often ask all of us to make sacrifices. You know, I think the city and other units of government, they should be doing the same thing as well, and we need to make sure that they do that. That would be one of my goals as a city councillor.
Okay. Question number three, and again one and a half minutes to respond. This one will begin with Jennifer Chelsk. If you were to write a job description for a Duluth city councillor, what would it include?
Well, it's our role as a city councillor to lay a solid infrastructural foundation with which businesses and the community can grow and thrive. We also need to maintain the budget and engage the community in a conversation about what our priorities are, what our values are for the budget, what we want to see the budget allocated towards. And so that's, and really with the budget diminishing over the years, that's the biggest challenge that we face as a community is what are we going to cut and what is important to us? So those are the two main pieces of the council job. We also need to maintain public services. And in the last several years, we've maintained a focus on the core services such as police and fire, public safety issues. Also, libraries and parks are important to us. As a community, we've said that those are things that we value. And so I'm going to be supporting the park referendum that will be coming up this November. Two of the things that it does not include is economic development and job creation. We need to partner with businesses. And that's something that I'll be doing is listening to small businesses in the community and trying to find ways that we can strengthen the Lakeside and Woodland Business District in our district.
If I were to write a job description for city councillor, it would go something like this. Like city government would be the first thing. You have to like government. You have to have an interest in the community and be willing to be out in the community, be willing to talk with people, be willing to go to events. You must be a good listener because you need to be able to hear what people are saying. Must also have an interest in policy because that's part of that infrastructure that the council deals with is we're really working at a policy level. Would be helpful if you had an experience with budgets or some sort of familiarity with big budgets, an understanding of unions and management because that's a very important. And a team player, someone who can work with other people on the council to work to get things done. I've already mentioned a good listener. I probably have that two or three times because that's very, very important. Good at dealing with conflict because in the little bit of time I've worked out in the community when I was on the tourism tax task force, for instance, there was certainly plenty of conflict going around. And must like long winters. I think I'd add that as well.
That's great. Yeah. Okay. I love this question, first of all. That's a great question. Okay. So if I were to write a job description for what an at-large city councillor is or could be, the first thing I would say is that you get to vote for two of us for at-large. So I want to just be sure to mention that before I forget. You have to love your home. And part of loving your home is doing absolutely everything you can to maintain it and improvement. So the first thing I would say is that you have to love living here. That's the cold winters, that's our streets, that's the people, that's the experience, that's people who go out of their way to make Duluth their home and demonstrate their passion for the city in a variety of ways. And the other thing that I would say, there are a lot of skills that you can bring to the work of a city councillor, but one of the things that I love about campaigns is that you actually get to gauge the style of a potential seated councillor. A campaign is a wonderful way to assess how somebody works, how they listen, how they troubleshoot, how they problem solve, how they make decisions. You need honesty, you need integrity. And I'm really proud that our campaign has been able to bring in a very broad base of supporters from all sorts of different corners of Duluth who are excited to live here, who are willing and ready to make hard decisions, who are ready to dig in and are committed to the city for the long haul. So if that was the job description, I would apply.
As you folks know, just about any job that you go to now, they give you a piece of paper with your job description. And I think that's wonderful, but I like to go beyond that and say, that's in my job description, even if it's not on there. I appreciate organizational means. I love working with people. I've been on committees. I've helped organize charitable fundraising in the community. One thing that I really enjoy is taking an honest assessment and having an open discussion about things. And as long as people are civil and they're just trying to help in problem solving, it's just something worth hearing for all of us to hear. And I think most of all, I like the fact that now we have this electronic communication. So with the blessing that I would be able to be the councillor, I'd just love to get emails from people and try to be able to send them a little bit note back and saying, well, I'm going to try to get back to you or I'm going to work on that as soon as I can. So not only do we have telephone and actually attending meetings, but we can have regular conversations on the telephone. And I just love communication. So please call me.
Now, if I had to write a job description for a city councillor, I would say that one of the biggest keys would be to have an eye toward the future. You know, we have to set the city up for the years coming up. If you look at the budget issue, I think that's been one of the issues. They've been kind of kicking the can down the road for a while, and we're sort of dealing with that mess now. You have to come up with solutions that actually fix the problem right away instead of just continuing that same pattern of pushing the problem down the road a little bit. Now, the other thing is, I think as an at-large councillor, it's that you have to remember that you represent everybody. That's all, everybody, you know? All genders, all races, all, you know, it doesn't matter how much money you make, where you live, or what you look like, or who you are. We represent everybody, and we have to remember that. We have to be as open as possible and as accepting as possible of everybody in our community. I think as an at-large city councillor, that would be one of my biggest objectives.
We earlier heard mention of 45th Avenue East. And just to clear the record, with 45th Avenue East, that was on the schedule to get redone about five years ago, prior to when I was on the city council. It's a five-year schedule that rolls every year. What had happened with the people on 45th Avenue East is that they petitioned to not have it done, if you can believe that or not, because they didn't want to be assessed. So what happens is it put it at the back end of the schedule then, and they're set for a Millen overlay. To again show you my commitment towards streets, when Cook was redone two years ago, they had to go with a wider width to meet fire code. Because it was a wider width, it took the boulevards out of play. So the sidewalks are butt right into the curb cuts. Some of the neighbors wanted to find, to see if they could get trees. Because of the economy, the bids came in on those contracts less than what the city thought. So I got the city to invest into trees that actually went onto people's private property to make sure we had those tree-lined roads on Cook. In terms of the job description of being a city councillor, especially a district city councillor, it's much of the things that you've heard tonight. But the one word I can think of is advocacy. Advocacy, advocacy. When people call, you call back. When people have a concern, you take care of it. The most recent concern that I'm dealing with now is the Duluth East High School students, is innovative as they are, are now parking in the spots at Washington Square. And so what's happened over the last two days is those particular spots are flagged for two-hour parking only during the school day. That's the definition of advocacy. It's listening and it's taking care of the problem.
Okay. With question number four, we'll begin with Linda Crowe. Again, one and a half minutes to answer. With cuts from state and federal government, what critical services would you maintain? And how would you do it?
With critical cuts to services, what would I maintain?
With cuts from state and federal government, what critical services would you maintain? And how would you do it?
Well, as I've said, the core issues or the core infrastructure for our city are our public safety. So that's police, fire, emergency. It's utilities, it's roads, it's parks and recreation, and it's libraries. And I would work very hard to maintain all of those. As I've said earlier, I think that cuts to those hurt us, the city, in trying to attract new people and new businesses. How would I deal with it? Multi-pronged approach. I think we have to continue to ask for LGA. We still have to, we need that. I believe that we may need to look at some kinds of tax increases. I believe we should look at things like our tourism tax task force. I was on a committee, and there are two taxes, a half percent tax on hotel motels and a half percent tax on food and beverages that will sunset sometime next year. One of the things the task force recommended was to have both of those extended, the food and beverage for just one year because Duluthians pay that. But the hotel motel, see if we can go and get that forever and use that as part of an infrastructure fund and looking for other kinds of efficiencies. So a multi-pronged approach.
Okay. So cut from state and federal government, what services would we maintain? It's kind of a summary of the question. Well, I think that the city of Duluth is doing a really efficient job in maintaining some of the core services that we do provide. And I appreciate alluding to some of those streets. For me, some of the main functions that a city provides, and I have been door knocking since April, so I have to tell you that this is also what I hear from residents in my door knocking when I'm at their doors. Public safety, the ability for fire and police to respond in a timely and safe manner, roads and a safe walkability for students to get to East High School maybe from where they're parking or other places. And then also our water, our sewer, our utilities. These are some very, very main core services that I think any municipality, it's in the best interest of their citizens to do a great job and an efficient job of delivering those services. I think we do that. I also think that while I absolutely value the parks and libraries, I use them all the time as a consumer. And I have to really share that my concern with those services is both personal, but it's also about the community. And I think we have to also take an honest assessment of the users of those services and how we leverage new resources. So for me, there is that piece of wanting to maintain local government aid as much as we possibly can because there's a real value to that tool. There is also the reality that we provide a whole set of services to our region, even though we're a mid-sized city with a mid-sized tax base. And so I think that there are opportunities to find new resources without looking at how we have to raise taxes for folks.
Well, we sure all rely on those core services, don't we? And Duluth is unique in that they have that steam plant. And it's a wonderful resource that we have here, and it offers services to a lot of downtown businesses. And from what I hear, they would like to sell that. Well, with a resource like that, I really believe that we ought to keep it. We ought to keep that resource in the community. And not only that, because of the gas and water system that we have right here in Duluth, I really believe that those two departments, it's possible for them to work together with the steam plant. And right now, they're both kind of separate issues, but because they're both technical type of facilities that provide services and utilities to the city of Duluth, there's somehow that they can work together because they're all under one roof. Another thing with the library and the parks, my residence is out in Gary New Duluth, and I don't know if a lot of you folks have passed by there, but they boarded up our parks and recreation facility out there. Somebody does come out and spray ice so the kids have a sheet of ice to be on. And one thing I have to say is, I'd like to say more.
Thank you. Well, of course, I would have to agree with everybody up here. The core services are for the most part, streets, public safety, public utilities, things of that nature. Now, when we talk about local government aid, it's important to note how variable it is from year to year. It fluctuates quite a bit, and that makes long-term budgeting pretty difficult. So with that in mind, you know, this year, you may have heard that the mayor is taking quite a bit of heat this year for some of the cuts that they're trying to make. Libraries are the biggest one that is getting the most attention. You know, it's unfortunate, nobody wants to see libraries with their hours cuts or parks and recreation centers with their facilities cut or their maintenance cut. But you know, we have to make some tough decisions. But that being said, I understand this fall, there's going to be a measure on the ballot with a modest tax increase that would help maintain those library hours. If that's something important to you, I'd certainly encourage you to support that. One of the things that I believe in the most is the people rule. The people make the decisions. While tax increases might not be my first choice, if the majority of voters do say that that's what they want, then that's exactly what I'll go with.
Thank you. I too am encouraged by the library and parks referendum vote this fall. It's a $2.7 million tax that everybody in the city of Duluth is going to vote on. So I'd encourage you to go out and vote and make your wishes known. Terms of core services, you've heard, you know, utilities, but keep in mind, utilities are enterprise funds, so they're user-fee based. And so that's a difference between the general fund and your water and gas bill. Your water and gas bill, there's actually four or five different silos, water, gas, sewer, stormwater, so on and so forth. And those are user-fee driven. So in my mind, those aren't core services, albeit there are fees built into there to take care and to fund infrastructure. One of them is a solid wastewater fee, or I can't remember the moniker now, that was put in to help pay for stormwater sewage overflow tanks through the stimulus funds. We got several million dollars to put in the big overflow tanks in the corner, I call it the big dig, right just west of Lee Ferkson Park. That frees up that money to invest in infrastructure. But to the question, core services to me are obviously public safety. Police and fire, their calls for services are going up. What we need to do is we need to find flexibility within the contracts to try and squeeze our dollar a little bit further. The firefighter union stepped up to the plate to diminish structured overtime, so built into the contract, they had overtime, they backed off on that. And I was the first to thank them for that publicly. The other one is, I supported the alarm fee for the police departments. You can't believe how much running around they do on false alarms to residential homes. I supported a fee. You get three free, and then you got to pay.
Critical services that I would maintain would obviously be the same that everyone else has talked about, police and fire. Streets and utilities in my mind are those as well. Libraries and parks, but it's really, I mean, finding the efficiencies, finding, well, I'll just start with police and fire. Police and fire, we need to figure out what level of service we as a community expect from our police and fire department and what we can live without. And then we need to make a commitment to staffing at that level. And if we can live with making cuts in those areas, then And if we can live with making cuts in those areas, then we can do that. But we, that's something we need to have a conversation about as a community. As far as streets and utilities, I think we need to continue to aggressively pursue all grants for our utilities. When it comes to the labor contracts, I think there are, there is room for efficiencies in terms of eliminating overtime and we need to really look into that. And I'm, I'm excited to start analyzing that with the city staff. And that requires trust and respect that I've gained. And with the parks referendum and the library referendum, I wanted to clarify that it's a park referendum. So it will be a vote that the voters have power over. And once it's put in place, the future administrations and city councillors can never touch it. It will be there for us to use. What the mayor has said is that if the park referendum passes, he will commit to restoring the library hours to full capacity, you know, back to, and he will not cut the branch library. So I'm hoping to support that. But it's something that I think that we need to look at as a city councillor. We need to work with state legislators to find some creative ways in which we can support our library system.
Okay, the next question will begin with Emily Larson. What measures would you take to promote economic development in Duluth?
Oh, good. Okay. I like this one because this is part of my day job. So I have the luxury of owning a business. Actually, my partner Doug and I, we own two businesses. One is an architecture firm downtown that we co-own with a business partner and the other is my consulting practice focused on economic development with a whole set of nonprofit organizations. I work with 11 nonprofit organizations. So I actually really feel strongly that one of the roles a councillor can do is play a significant role in setting a tone for what economic development can look like in the city of Duluth. So for me, I am very concerned. I think we've done a great job as a city. We have wonderful economic development leaders. Part of their talent has been to bring large employers here and to do retention with larger employers. I think that we have a gap of businesses, however, that has incredible opportunity, businesses that chose to be here, that are ready to be here, that are ready to grow. And I believe this is where we're going to get middle-income jobs from. So part of what I would do is partner with those organizations, of course, and partner with the leaders that we have there, but also make a very significant effort to reach out to those middle-sized businesses. My friends who work with entrepreneur, entrepreneurial organizations, my friends at the Chamber, my friends in various places, really have reaffirmed the need that there is an opportunity in that gap of businesses. And I'm totally, totally excited to be a part of setting a tone and being creative and partnering with the leaders that we already have and bringing new ideas forward of how we grow those businesses.
Well, economic development is sure important to all of us. One of the things that we've heard in the past was that they were gonna work on trying to make the application for a new business to come into Duluth easier. And it doesn't seem like, from what I've heard and some of the people that I've talked to, that the process has been made too much, too much more available to people. There's, there's still a lot of roadblocks that need to be removed. I know a business personally, that the zoning didn't allow them to develop the business the way that they wanted to. And it was just a great idea for a community business. One, one business, they just totally got turned down because the zone for, for which they wanted to move in, it was estimated that, well, there's too many restaurants there already. One thing about restaurants, people still need to eat. So it's just good competition to have restaurants. And I, I'd really like to see the, the zoning of different businesses open up for people so that they can start a new business, create jobs and have a good opportunity for not only the neighborhood they're located in, but for hiring some folks.
Well, I think setting the tone is absolutely the right thing. You know, the city council is, and the local government is really the first place that people looking to expand their businesses or possibly moving here, it's one of the first places they look to see if it's going to be a good idea. Is it a stable government? Do they make decisions where taxes increase dramatically? We want to be as friendly as possible in that respect. I think it's important, the most important, to focus on small businesses. There are a lot of people who are sort of just on the cusp of being able to afford to start a new business. Can they afford it? Can they not? Yeah, I think we have to focus on them most importantly. Perhaps creating incentive packages, finding ways to just make it a little bit easier for them to open up and start to employ just a few people here in the Twin Ports and here in Duluth. You know, one of the great things about our community is that we have so many people here who have a lot of experience in this field and, and, you know, I certainly don't myself, but we've got a great people here that I can certainly rely on and I'm sure they'll be involved in that process as well.
Well, I'm on the Duluth Economic Development Authority, more affectionately known as DETA, for the last four years, but actually I've been involved in economic development for the last 24. Matter of fact, 10 years ago, I helped facilitate, bring in a lumber wholesaler and green-treating manufacturing plant down in the Seaway Port Authority. If you're driving from Superior to Duluth on the Blotnik Bridge and look over the right-hand guard rail, you'll see all that lumber down there. I helped facilitate, bring that business in, not only by doing direct lending, but also bringing the Northland Foundation, the City of Duluth 1200 Fund to come in here. The other thing is, is you need to be a salesperson. We need to provide an environment that's good for economic development and that's trying to limit what the cost inputs are. Cost inputs are utilities. So every time we raise utility rates, whether it be water on a large-scale basis or electricity and we have no control over that, that impacts whether or not they come into town. So we need to make sure our utility rate structure is competitive with other communities because economic development is very competitive. Need to be a salesperson. A week ago tonight, on Tuesday, I attended a meeting after the DETA meeting with the AAR folks, one from Chicago, one from Kansas, was he from Kansas? They're the folks that are looking at putting an MRO facility in the new maintenance, or the Northwest Airlines maintenance base. MRO is maintenance repair operations. Sat down and talked to them and we just kind of schmoozed them a little bit and said, listen, Duluth is your town. The fair that we had here was fantastic. They had 400 applications for AMP mechanics. That's the kind of stuff we need to do. We need to exploit our strengths, which is our workforce, which is our work, our availability, and say, hey, we've got high work ethic in the city of Duluth. You belong here and we're gonna make sure it's worth your while. So above and beyond, it's a, a salesperson.
I was talking to one of the business owners that recently owned up, opened up a business here in Lakeside and she also owns a business in Hermantown. And she said that her, putting her business together in Hermantown was so much easier than going through City Hall in Duluth to get her business up and running. And so there's still, even though we've made progress in that direction with the building codes and the architectural review that needs to occur before a business can open, I think there's still room to improve on that. And so that's one of the things we need to work on. Another thing is that when entrepreneurs come in and they're willing to risk an investment in our community, we need to make sure that if we take the time to ensure that the zoning laws fit the culture of our community in that neighborhood, we need to support it. Once that entrepreneur has made an investment and said they're willing to make an investment in our community, so that's another thing we need to do. We as, as leaders of the community need to support those zoning laws once they're put in place. We also, when it comes to taxes and fees, we need to create stability. And as city councillor, we have authority over those budgets and those fees. And so we need to make sure that long-term planning is put in place so that when we, when a business wants to, so that businesses, businesses want predictability and they want, they want to be able to predict what taxes and fees are ahead and they want to move into a community where there is stability. And so we need to create that stability as a city councillor. We also need to partner with and support our small businesses that are already invested in our community because those, that's the backbone of our community are those small businesses. I know it as a, as a daughter of a small business owner and I am a small business owner myself. We also need to realize that we are the ambassadors for our city and we are always avail, you know, we are always able to, so, thanks.
It is unfortunate that the first answer of the bureaucracy is all too often, no. I saw this at UMD all the time. Someone would come with a new idea and the answer would be, no, we've not done that. We've never done it that way. And we've heard from the, from the other folks up here, that same sort of sentiment about having to, learning how to remove roadblocks, the real ones and the perceived ones, but how difficult it is to work with City Hall. I've door knocked all over Duluth and I hear it consistently, the story of the small entrepreneur trying to work with City Hall. One person tried for over a year and moved to Fargo. And that's not really good for economic development when they're taking these great ideas and they're going somewhere else. So removing the roadblocks, real and perceived, has to be the number one thing that we do. Number two, we have to embrace our student leaders. I know if you didn't get much sleep last night because you had a student house, students living next to you, you might not think that, but they are our leaders. I was part of a night creative community initiative and our biggest export in Duluth is our college graduate. And we need to find a way to retain them and keep them here because they have lots of ideas and they will help us grow. And in general, number three, we need to be more welcoming. We need to connect the dots and remember that all those empty storefronts mean less revenue coming into the city. We need to fill the empty, the empty storefronts so that we can hire more police.
Okay, as the moderator, I'm gonna take a liberty here because we're reaching a time when I don't want to lose people. So I'm gonna just have you take one minute to answer the next question instead of one and a half. So here's the next question, starting with Tim. What ought the city's role be in ensuring that its residents have access to affordable, safe, decent housing in Duluth?
Can you repeat? I'm sorry, just for me.
Yeah, it's kind of a long question. What ought the city's role be, in other words, should the city's role be, in ensuring that its residents have access to affordable, safe, decent housing in Duluth?
Well, the housing situation in Duluth, I, just to be honest with you, there, there is a lot of properties in place for, for people that are low, low income to be able to, through, through, if I can say it, Baumann. They do, they do have a lot of properties and the application process for that, you know, it just takes a little time to do it. But one, one thing that we really do need to be conscious of in the same note is that there is this, this real poverty and anything we can do to increase fundraising for these food shelves in town, which are going out of their food at a quicker rate than ever, but whatever we can do to promote that, more power to us because that is being proactive in this situation.
Yeah, I think there's no question that the city has to take a proactive role in this. You know, it's, you know, as Tim Riley was talking about earlier, we do have a homelessness problem here in the Twin Ports. Providing, finding ways to provide affordable housing for them in this area, it's one way to help solve that problem. You know, with funding and budgets right now, you know, it's, the problem is, it's not going to get any easier to do that. The best way we can all do that is to support your favorite local charity, your favorite local food shelf and that sort of a thing. There are a lot of great fundraising events going on. In fact, just this, coming up this Saturday, there's going to be an event at Wade Stadium. It's one of many ways that we can all help. And I think city councillors should be able to work as sort of a figurehead or someone who actively supports those organizations as part of their role to try to get their own constituents out there as well.
I've been sitting here trying to rack my brain, thinking about how I'm going to answer this in one minute because it's a very complicated question. About five or six years ago, there was community leaders in town that established, and I can't exactly remember the title of it, 1,000 units in 10 years for low-income, moderate housing, which they beat and, or they did it in four or five years. So we added a lot of housing units. The problem in Duluth or in anywhere, and I've seen a door knocking, is there's a lot of vacant homes and that's due to foreclosure. And people are getting foreclosed out of these homes left and right. I know it firsthand. And what's happening is they get foreclosed out of a house, they can't, they can't reapply for credit because their credit is bad, so they get kicked into the rental market. Well, you can understand what's happening in the rental market then. The rental rates are all going up. And so you've got a very, very complex problem here in terms of, you know, rent controls, in terms of assistance. And there's, I mean, this would be a topic that I think the legal and voters should look at over, one question over maybe two or three hours because honestly, there's no, no way that you can answer this in one minute.
I'm gonna be honest and say that I, this is an issue that has interested me, but I'm, I need to learn more about it and I'm excited to learn more about it and talk to the Housing Commission. I know someone from the commission is here tonight and so I look forward to learning more about the issue and how the city might better deal with this or help partner with entrepreneurs willing to invest in that sort of investment in our community. So I need to learn more.
I've been thinking, as others have been talking about the question, what should or what ought the role of the city be in dealing with, with issues of housing, safe, affordable housing and it, and I need to learn more about the issue as well, but it occurs to me that the city's, city needs to remember that they represent everybody, everybody in the city of Duluth, whether you have a home or not. And we should be encouraging and working with other partners, Northern Community Trust, the Neighborhood Housing Services, to help with, to help people make sure they have housing. Need to be working with the landlords to make sure that they are providing the, the kind of decent places to live. Need to be working with, Todd mentioned, foreclosures. And that's a huge issue because that becomes a safety issue. If a house is sitting empty and only the raccoons are in it, it's, it attracts crime. It's all, all those sorts of things. So we should be encouraging work on that.
Well, my kids go to Nettleton School and I can say for a fact that my kids learn better when their peers have safe and affordable and decent housing. There is no doubt in my mind about that. The city has a really effective role, I think, in the way that we can ensure that there is safe and decent affordable housing in Duluth. There are two tracks. One is a homeownership track. Organizations like the Northern Communities Land Trust has done an incredible job of improving neighborhoods and improving the lives of folks who purchase homes with incredibly low foreclosure rates. I'm really proud that Duluth as a city is one-third to two-thirds less foreclosure than the Twin Cities. So I, I absolutely agree that we have a foreclosure crisis for our, for our size town. However, we do also have some tools like Lutheran Social Service that's doing a great job in working with homeowners. And part of it is really needing to be clear that the city can send a strong message that there are resources, you need to get out there early and you need to get out ahead of the, of the problem. So there are two other concrete things. The city does have a ton of money that comes through it, through the federal government. Block grant funding can be used for affordable housing. And the last thing I would say is that our building and safety department needs to be properly staffed so they can keep on complaints and prevent further disarray.
Okay, thanks. I know that was a tough one.
That's a tough one. Yeah.
It was. Okay, so the next question is an audience question. We have two here. I don't know if we'll have time, but let's see if, if we can get through it in one minute or less, starting with Chad. There is a question here about, someone is wondering about people using more bikes. It seems like more people are utilizing more bikes and other modes of transportation. So what would be your opinion concerning complete streets in the city's future?
Well, I don't think there's any question. If you look around in other larger cities, multiple modes of transportation are, is starting to become the norm, you know? Not everybody uses a car to get around. Not everybody uses a car to get around day-to-day, do their jobs. Bikes are becoming more common, public transportation as well. You know, I understand they're difficult to fund. I think in the future, at some point, we are certainly going to have to consider the importance of complete streets. We're going to need to eventually. Biking is going to become bigger here in Duluth. And I've seen, I was surprised, it gets colder, yet the number of bikers I see on the road, it just doesn't seem to go down. So, you know, we have to, we certainly have to keep them in mind, you know, for, it's a safety reason, too. You know, you put them on the sidewalk, pedestrians are in the way. So we have to consider their safety as we plan for our streets in the future.
Thank you. Another tough one in a minute. I think the reason why most people are biking in the winter is they can't afford our gas prices anymore. But, you know, complete streets is a real tough one. I voted in favor of the complete streets, well, it was a unanimous vote for complete streets about two years ago at the city council. But as it turns out, it's a lot more complicated than that. Complete streets isn't just about bikes, it's about walkability and boulevards. And for some reason, I've had a plethora in this particular district about sidewalks and boulevards and so on and so forth. You know, Glenwood Street, last year, 25 people signed a petition to not have a sidewalk on the stretch between 49th and 44th on the Upper Side. I brought forth their petition, and it was turned down, you know, because I was representing the constituents. Earlier this spring, the citizens on Ivanhoe Street, where they never had sidewalks before, signed another petition where they didn't want sidewalks, all under the guise of complete streets that one went through. Now I'm going through another, and personally, I like sidewalks with boulevards because I like trees, but that's not my job. My job is not to impose my personal opinion and will on people. My job is to represent my constituents. Monday night, you're going to see a resolution that gets reconsidered on the upper part of Glenwood, where people want their sidewalks butt into the curbs. And, and again, the citizens want it, but because of complete streets, it's probably going to be pushed back at them.
This is a controversial issue for a lot of people in Lakeside and Lester Park and Woodland, but I do support complete streets. As an athlete, as a mom, I have friends that are bikers. They have been hit by cars a number of times, some of them. As a mother of children that will walk, that go, that attend school at Lester Park Elementary, I think we want to see the sidewalks on both sides, and it's, it's not just the loudest voices, it's about what is in the best interest of the entire community, and that's something that we need to keep in mind. It's not just, I am representing homeowners, but I'm also representing the entire community, and we need to make decisions that are in the best interest of the community. And I think compromise is the key. I think the complete streets, there are compromises that can be had with the, with the positions that complete streets takes, but I'm going to favor its public safety, and I'm going to favor what's in the best interest of all of us, so.
I'm from Dayton, Ohio originally, and when I moved to Minnesota 25 years ago, I was struck by the, what I would call the multi-use policy that Minnesota has. You go on one of our paved trails, and there are bikers and skateboarders and rollerbladers, and now those little carts down in Canal Park, people pedaling and not very well. And, and what I, what I liked about the, that multi-use is it meant that we have public places that are for everybody, and that's why I'm a supporter of complete streets. I was on the advisory board for Fit City that actually worked and came up with the idea of complete streets and took it to the, to the city council. And I, I understand that it, if it's not what you had, may not want it, and it causes other kind of problems, but it means that we're making a public space that's available to everybody, whether you're walking or riding your bike, and I think that's important.
So complete streets does have several components to it. The bikeability question, I really appreciate. I love biking as a means of transportation. I think many people are emerging who want to take that even further. The Lake Walk is not enough, and it's a great corridor here. I love it out in Lakeside. I love what we can do with that. I know that the intent is to connect that all the way up with Munger Trail. However, I think what we're going to find is that there are certain intersections, like Sixth Avenue East and Fourth Street, is, are incredibly problematic areas. Those kinds of specific, site-specific places are perfect for complete streets. I think it is a little bit harder when you get into neighborhoods where people bought houses with the intent that they wouldn't have sidewalks. That's always going to be a conflict, I think, when you have a broad initiative like complete streets. However, I love the idea that we took this idea that was popular somewhere else, brought it here, we're going to tweak it, we're going to make it work really well for us. And when it comes to ensuring safe pedestrian and bike transit, I am all for it. I think it's wonderful.
I'm a person that, that likes jogging, and out where we live, they, they built, right on Commonwealth out there, they really did a good job of making it accessible to people, and a real nice, broad sidewalk out there. One thing about the complete streets, I think that we've made some progress on it, but the real progress that I'd like to see is how they work together with the Sewer and Water Department so that one day they're putting in, in a new sidewalk, and the next day, they're digging it up. And I know that these two hands can work together, and more and, more and more, we just have to take just a little bit of time and say we care about people, and have those two departments communicate actively and collaboration together.
Okay, we did have another question, and perhaps the person who wrote it would be willing to talk to candidates after if it has to do with the steam plant. But in, in the interest of time, since we're already way past the time that we're going to finish, I'm going to move along to the closing statements, and that will begin with Todd Fedora, and let's see if he can do this in a minute.
Economic development, we have to use our money more wisely. That's why I was so much against the North Shore Theater. That thing's going to cost you taxpayers, out of DETA money, over $10 million, and we have no way to fund it. I've been representing you for the last four years. I'd ask you to vote for me again on November 8th for the next four because I'm trying to make sure that we limit the kind of impact we have on your pocketbook. This is a great city. I love this city. I love the kids. I love the parents. I love the grandparents. One of the crowning achievements that I had is Duluth is the first city to ban synthetic marijuana. And, and folks, we were followed by Superior, Hermantown, Grand Rapids, created momentum to get it banned statewide. This is bad, bad stuff.
Well, thank you for coming again tonight, and I want to say to my opponent that I, I really respect anyone that steps forward to serve the community, but I think it's time for a new voice in the First District, and I think that I will be a great new voice in the community. I have a lot of passion and dedication to seeing this city move forward. The issue that I have championed isn't K-2, it's water infrastructure and clean water in Lake Superior, and that, oh, no way. Just give me one second. You know, that passion has led me to, you know, public, public television came here recently and did a couple of days of filming on the issue of water infrastructure, and I was one of the people they filmed. I may very likely end up on the editing room floor, but, you know, it's, it's my passion and dedication for this kind of stuff has, has shown through on a statewide level, and I want to take that same passion and dedication and put it into this city.
I started by talking about my university experience as dean and in the union mediation experience. I'll close by also talking about my community experience. I was on the KCCI Night Creative Community, I mentioned. Been on the Blanden Initiative as well, fellowship. I'm on the Park State Bank Board of Directors. I'm also on the St. Luke's Foundation Board of Directors. So I've done lots of things in the community as well as at UMD, and feel that I have the best background coming to the city council, and I hope that you will vote for me November 8th.
Thank you. I am excited to live in Duluth. I feel we are at an intersection of opportunity. We have a mayor with an 86% approval rating. We have a new chancellor at UMD. We have a new superintendent at the public school system. We have a new president at Lake Superior College. This has never happened before, and I am excited to be a part of it. I am committed to this city for the long haul. I love living here. I'm looking so forward to working with you and for you. You can check out our website at LarsonForDuluth.com. You can find us on Twitter and Facebook, and most importantly, you can vote November 8th. Thank you.
Well, we have just a wonderful community to live in here, and we've got great services. I believe that the council has done a lot of, lot of good things over the past years. The big thing is, is I want people to feel welcome. I really feel that a lot of people feel alienated to enter that courtroom. There was a survey, and only half the people in Duluth, from this select group, said that they felt welcome in the meeting, and I want to do my best to make each and every one of you welcome.
Well, just one last time, thank you all for coming tonight. You know, we've got several more forums and debates coming up before the election, so if you want to know more, there's still going to be time to hear it. Also, if you'd like to know more from me, my website is ChadSmithDuluth.com. You can find my contact information there. My phone number's also on the city clerk's website. Just like to thank you all for coming. Hope you'll get out to the polls on November 8th.
Thank you. And before you go, speaking of other candidate forums, I'm going to announce that we do have a couple others. One, the League is not involved in, but on Saturday, it looks like, a nightclub at Home, on Saturday 24th, September 24th, at Wade Stadium. There are all kinds of events starting at 1:00, but there is to be a city council candidate forum at 7:30 PM at Wade Stadium on Saturday. That sounds like an interesting event. On October 4th, the Legal Women Voters is sponsoring a school board forum, which will be at the old, historic Old Central High School at 7:00. And October 27th, these folks, not the first district's candidates, but District 4 and at-large candidates, will be back on October 27th at Holy Family Church, another forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters. Also, this forum will be showing its, its entire, on the Legal Women Voters website, which is www.lwduhwork.org. You can stop in the, in the table at the back of the room for more information about the League. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization, and while we never endorse a candidate, as I said before, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our communities strong. I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one, and that has a great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you're interested in learning more about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available tonight. So I thank you for coming tonight to this forum, and I hope you will remember to vote on November 8th, and I thank all of the candidates for coming here tonight. I think it was a really good forum. So. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. Thank you. 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 Thank you.